Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is February the 16th, and we do have a quorum. We have Supervisor Moss that is attending by telephone. Jenny, can you confirm that Supervisor Moss is with us?
Supervisor Moss, are you there?
I am.
All right. All right, we'll begin this meeting this morning with the invocation. I'd like to ask Reverend Fred French from the Valley Vista Community Church to lead us this morning. Thank you.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for the promise that if we lack wisdom, we can ask of you, and you will give it to us generously. You have said, "Ask and it shall be given." So we ask for your wisdom and guidance this morning. We thank you for these leaders who have taken on the responsibilities of public service, and we ask for your blessing on their diligence and the use of their gifts to deal with the decisions they need to make today for the sake of those you have put in their care. Thank you for Mojave County and for all the blessings you've given us here. May we sense your presence and grace with us this morning. In Christ's name, amen.
Thank you. Now, if you would all please join me in a moment of silence for our colleague and friend Carol Meyer, who passed away on February the 4th. Carol was a good conscientious recorder who was finishing up her second term as our county recorder. She was dedicated to Mojave County for nearly 25 years. She was a wonderful and fun-loving person who is a true inspiration to us all, and she leaves very big shoes to fill. So if you'd just join me in a moment of silence for Carol. Thank you very much. Supervisor Watson, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
If you'll follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in the agenda pursuant to ARS 3843103A, 3, and 4. The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to discuss and consider items noticed on the agenda with the double asterisk pursuant to the ARS 3843103A and 1, which authorizes discussions and consideration of employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, dismissal, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of a public officer, appointee, or employee of the county. The Chair will now entertain a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on March 7th, 2016, at 9:30 a.m., or at the conclusion of the regular meeting, whichever is later, for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A, 3, and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk. So moved.
Second motion.
Yeah, we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Going on to the official business to come before the board this morning, we'll start out with a discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Do we have anything? Attorney Ekstrom.
Do not, Madam Chairman.
Okay, committee and/or legislative reports, starting with Supervisor Moss. Do you have anything?
No, thank you.
I'm having difficulty hearing you.
I have no report.
Okay. Supervisor Angus?
None this morning.
Supervisor Watson?
None this morning.
And Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quad State represents us on the Lower Colorado for Multispecies Conservation Program, and Bill Lamb attended their work session and a few things that it was up in, held in Las Vegas. The first agenda item was the options for ESA coverage of the northern Mexico garter snake. In July of 14, the garter snake was listed as a threatened species requiring measures that are necessary and advisable to provide for the conservation of the snake. The snake has never been found in any of the MSCP conservation areas until last year, when it was found in the Beal Lake area. After gathering information and preparing a biological assessment, Bureau of Reclamation consulted with the USFWS and obtained biological opinion. November 2015 opinion stated that the maintenance and monitoring activities within BLCA are not likely to jeopardize the continuing existence of the snake, since the snake may move to other conservation areas that have improved habitat for the species. A discussion with the work group was to look at options for an ESA coverage of the snake. The feeling of the group was that the snake should be included in the MSCP as one of the covered species. This will require preparing an assessment for all MSCP conservation areas to identify impacts that are in line with measures already being made that would benefit the snake. Bureau of Rec would then consult with the Fish and Wildlife to determine conservation requirements for measures that are needed in managing the sites. It is anticipated that this would only require documentation of what is already being done. Once the consultation has been completed, US Fish and Wildlife Service would issue a draft and a final biological opinion. This would require some modification of the existing HCP, but would set a precedent for how best to include other species not covered by the permits that may be found or move into the conservation areas. Bureau of Rec will work closely with the Fish and Wildlife to develop an assessment, which is presented to the Steering Committee sometime in May, and final decision on how the species will be handled in the HCP will be presented to the SC for final approval. Hoover Dam Contracts, the Hoover Power Allocation Act, extends Nevada, California, Arizona power contracts that expire in 2017 and continue them until 2067. A new provision makes 100 megawatts of electricity available to tribes, irrigation districts, and rural electric cooperatives that were not customers of the dam when the power was allocated in 1928 law or in the 1984 update. If the tribes or other qualified entities apply for power contract, they can use existing contracts held currently or apply individually. If the tribes apparently apply separately, they can become a member of the MSCP Steering Committee. If they apply and become a member of the Native American Participation Group, they are already, are a member of the SC under the organization. How the tribes will enter into a contract is not sure at this time. A meeting is scheduled for the 27th with the tribes to get more information. All contracts are required to pay fees for the MSCP program. This will be assessed through each state contribution where the tribes reside. It is not expected to be a large sum, since the power provided is small and could result in a range from 500 to 3,000 per year. This will be sorted out the coming months and brought before the Steering Committee for further action. Planet Ranch is currently being seeded with alfalfa seed that will be irrigated this spring and probably for the next couple of years to protect the water rights. Harvesting of the crops was not discussed and will probably come along during the next Steering Committee meetings. A future conference call will be held on the 25th of February. The next scheduled in-person meeting will be April 27th at Las Vegas. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a county administrator's report this morning?
I have no report today, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the January 4th and January 19th Board of Supervisors' regular minutes. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Going on to the call to the public. Those wishing to address the board at the call of the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments would be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing an item on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. We do have two people that have signed up to speak on the consent agenda items, and I'll go ahead and let them speak during the call to the public, and we'll begin with Steve Robinson, who wanted to speak on item 33.
My name is Steve Robinson. I live at 3439 North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. Chairperson Bishop, supervisors, staff. A friend of mine and of one of the supervisors posted this on Facebook to me directly. "If I say first of all, run away because I have prepared research, data, and charts and will destroy you." I disagree with that. I will only challenge the logic of what you have to say. Referencing item 33, I have two questions about an appointment or a pay raise that was given for somebody out of the clerk of the board's office, and I bring it up because I did my research, and I found out it is our chairman, chairperson Bishop's administrative assistant that received a small raise, about $1,150. And she may be well worth it, even though when you look at a $47,000 salary and you have the median household income or median individual income in Mojave County at $18,000, and then even among people that actually are working in Mojave County, they're making about $30,000, it's hard for us to understand an administrative assistant getting $47,000. So my question for you Supervisor Bishop is how do you justify after voting for a property tax increase and voting for a sales tax increase, saying we have no money, justify giving your receptionist or your administrative assistant a raise? That's my question, and I wonder if you could respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person that has signed up to speak is Carmen Johnson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carmen Johnson. I live at 1162 South Drake, City of Golden Valley. This morning, I'd like to speak on the Transportation Commission. I attended my first meeting, and I'd like to suggest the possibility of having them moved from the Public Works Building to this room here. At the meeting, I attended the room filled quickly and was only standing room. I observed a couple of the ladies having an issue with hearing due to the lack of the sound system and the background noise. I'm aware that we are counseled against speaking during a meeting, but have observed even the board and commissioners doing so. I think it would be beneficial to the public to have this done. I am also speaking on item 34, the appointment of Kathy Rosengrant to the Transportation Committee representing supervisorly District 4, term effective February 16th, 2016 through February 15th, 2018, suggested by our Chairwoman, Jean Bishop. I am questioning this decision while I applaud the decision to flesh out the board. I am sure Ms. Rosengrant will be a blessing to the board as a citizen of Mojave County, but I have to stop and wonder why at this time, when only 15 days ago, the commission was in danger of being disbanded. The district really needs someone. The district that really needs somebody is District 3, as they have no representation whatsoever. The board agreed to table consideration to disband for a year's time, which I applaud, as we do need transparency in our government, and the Citizens Committee provides that. By disbanding the committee, Chairwoman, our Supervisor Watson, Chairwoman Jean Bishop, you are not removing a layer of government, as had been stated, but you're placing a blind between the board and the citizens. Excuse me. You might find my source of information beginning at minute 46 on the video of February 1st meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Will not the decision to have her approved be a conflict of interest, as she is employee of Mojave County's Financial Department? She would be required to attend meetings during the morning, afternoon, and evenings during the week. How will this affect the Financial Department in her not being able to attend the duties assigned to her in the running of Mojave County? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. We do have the letter that you submitted to all of the board, and we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go on to presentations. We have the Mojave County Automated Flood Warning System and new web viewing tools presented by Nick Hunt, Development Services Director, and David West, our flood control district engineer from Mojave County Flood Control District. So good morning, gentlemen. I look forward to your presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity for providing this presentation on the Mojave County Flood Warning System. And if I can ask the IT people to bring it up on the screen. I have it. Thank you. And I just may just try to jump to the first slide. The Flood Warning System Network was built and is maintained by the Development Services Flood Control District, and the National Weather Service relies on Mojave County system. Development of the system started in 2001, and this presentation marks a milestone since we recently made major improvements, both to the system and our web viewer. We have every reason to believe that our upgraded Mojave County system is the best in the West. It consists of roughly 177 fully-automated solar-powered weather stations, and I say roughly because we installing more as we speak, and seven weather cameras that continuously report meteorological data such as precipitation, stream flow, wind, and temperature. The data from the sensors is received and stored at the central base station at the Flood Control District, and all data is available on the county website at the new Flood Control Web Viewer. The system collects data automatically in real time as conditions change, and when conditions warrant, alarms are automatically generated and distributed through text messages, emails, and radio. During storm events, the system is also actively monitored by the Flood Control District staff. The district staff sends out essential information, weather alarms, to approximately 50 recipients, including the county emergency management, the sheriff's office dispatch, patrol surgeons, sheriff's search and rescue, public works road maintenance, and many other first responders. The system also has an important function when considering future economic development as it stores and provides all historic precipitation data used by development engineers and developers. This data is a vital input for hydrology evaluations required for all development and drainage design, as well as for infrastructure and construction design. I wish to emphasize that all the credit for improving and maintaining the system belongs to our outstanding technical staff under the supervision of Dave West, a professional engineer. He's our division manager, and he will continue.
Good morning, Supervisors. The slide that's up now is just one of the more exciting developments that we've got going on right now. This is helicopter installations in cooperation with the Arizona Game and Fish. They selected some of their drinker sites that they wanted to provide monitoring for, and because they were in remote areas, and we would have had challenges getting permits to put in rain gauges in those areas, we were able to cooperate with them. They provided the helicopter for equipment delivery, and then our staff hiked into those locations to install the sensors. The web viewer that Nick mentioned is one of the newer developments to our system, and can be accessed through the county webpage. The web viewer gives access to all of the data, the web cameras, and has different ways to get at that information. The first here is the map viewer, so you can use this to zoom in and out and locate maps in your area of interest. As you can see, the gauges in the watersheds change color depending on the conditions. So a watershed with an alarm condition will turn red, so that highlights it, makes it easier to see where we have significant rainfall. Gauges that are undergoing different conditions will also change color, so some of them are yellow or blue. And there's a tool that you can go through to select the information for that individual location, and it will bring up a plot and a table showing exactly what's going on at that station, and also some historical data for that station. The next page here is the one that I find to be the most useful. You can get at this through the same website. This is watershed-based or community-based precipitation or stream gauge information, and again, it changes color. So in the graph there, if it has had waterfall within that time period, it turns blue, so you can look at it in a glance and see where it's raining. You can change with the pulldowns at the top of the page, the date and time, so if you want to look at a historical time period and find out how much rain was on a particular day over the weekend or something like that, you can set the date and time for the end of that 24-hour period, and it will give you the rainfall at that point. So before you were limited to what we generated in our storm reports, now anybody from the public or staff can essentially generate a storm report for whatever date and time that they want on the fly, and it's also used for active monitoring. It's updated about every minute so that we can use this for monitoring, and again, it'll turn red if we have a system that's under alarm. The next thing is our weather cameras. I've got six up on the slide here. There are seven total, and these can be accessed by county staff in the event of an emergency. They're typically on a tour mode, and they'll move through their standard positions and capture a still picture once a minute, and that's displayed on the county webpage. During an event, we have the ability to take control of those cameras either through a cellphone app or a computer link, and we can pan and zoom those cameras to actively monitor the event. And then, this is one of our new developments. Based on the Dean Peak Fire and the fire down in the Topock area last year and other events, we wanted to be able to deploy a camera to any location in the county with cellphone service, so we've constructed a trailer now with a weather camera and a complete weather station. It takes us about an hour to get it on the road and another hour or two to set it up, depending on the location. But that's active now, and we can monitor that the same way. So if we were to have another fire emergency or another Beaver Dam flood event, we could deploy this trailer and have additional weather data, as well as have an additional camera to assist the first responders in monitoring the situation, and also our staff in making informed decisions. Just a little bit about the cost and maintenance of the system. The maintenance is all through flood control staff. We do occasionally have a contractor in to assist with troubleshooting. Each station costs about $5,000 to install with all the different components. The cost goes up and down a little bit, depending on which sensors are included in that installation. And we've got three full-time staff members whose primary responsibility is to go through and maintain the system and visit them twice a year. The other opportunity that I wanted to extend is that there's an awful lot of information here that I find interesting, but I'm an engineer, and what I find interesting isn't necessarily what everybody else finds interesting, but we would love to share that with anybody who wants to dig a little bit deeper into what we've got.
Thank you for your time, and I just want to echo what Dave said, that if anybody, if the supervisors, if anybody in the public has any questions, we are available, and I want to invite you all and anyone interested for a more personalized, more detailed presentation, and we'll be glad to arrange a presentation and be at service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any of the Supervisors have any questions or comments? Are any of the Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Watson?
Mr. Hunt, you might want to inform the board of the meeting we have tomorrow at 2:00 with the NRCS about putting soil moisture measurements and temperature control monitoring on 10 of our sites, if you'd like to kind of outline what we're doing on that.
Thank you, Supervisor Watson. That's a very good opportunity to point out the other uses of the system. We keep improving the system as we speak, and we're working with other state and federal agencies. And one of the items that we're gonna add to many of our stations, right now we have 10 targeted stations, we're gonna add this soil moisture capability and the soil temperature. And this will serve two purposes. One, it will help everybody that does any farming, but has a tremendous use for flood control, because in floods, of course, the saturation level or the soil moisture content is critical. When we evaluate also for engineers that do hydrology, it's a very important input, historic input that we will be able to provide when they calculate the runoff and the capacity of any basin. So, thank you. This is one good area that we are improving right now. We are in the process. There are many others, like Dave pointed out. Like Dave pointed out, we're working with the Fish and Wildlife Service. We measure some of their tanks. They paid for the installation. We just provided that. We're working with ADAT, for example, on their highways, and they have full access to our system. And everybody benefits throughout the county, of course, because these stations are spread out throughout the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to pass on that I get a lot of compliments from other government agencies from around the country for the system that you folks have set up up there. The way the response is to the people to keep them informed, it really alleviates a lot of problems that we have, especially during the flooding season. And unfortunately, I think you probably have more people watching your camera on the wash in Golden Shores than we have washes this board meeting, so. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Moss, do you have any comments?
None, thank you.
Okay, and I have to agree. You guys are the best in the West. I've been out and about District 4 and seen these stations located in various areas. And I love the way we're working with other agencies like Game and Fish, and we are kind of the envy of the state with this technology. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
And Supervisor Bishop, if I just may mention, I mentioned Golden Valley. Search and rescue was out there last year, actually saving lives, moving people out of there. And they completely relied on our system, on the timing, on when the floods will occur. That's just one example. Same thing up at the Beaver Dam area. Thank you very much.
I'd rather remember that. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, going on to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items and a sub-board member's sole request. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and separate discussion and action. So do any of the supervisors have anything they'd like to pull, starting with Supervisor Moss?
Number 15.
15. And Supervisor Angus, do you have anything?
Number 6.
Number 6. Supervisor Watson?
None.
And Supervisor Johnson?
18 and 30. Madam Chair, if you have no items, I'd make a motion to approve consent minus item 6, 15, 18, and 30.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, going on to item number 6, pulled by Supervisor Angus. authorize the Arizona Attorney General's Office or their designated to defend Mojave County and the Transwestern Pipeline Company versus Arizona Department of Revenue and Mojave County, case number TX 2016 000931.
Madam Chair, when I saw this, it just reminded me that we haven't really had an update about this lawsuit, and I was wondering if staff can put it on for an executive session for next meeting.
We'll do that.
Madam Chairman, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Okay, thank you. I believe we need a motion on that, so we can move on to item number 15, pulled by Supervisor Moss.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve item 6.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on item number 6. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, now moving on to item 15. Supervisor Moss, pull this item. Sitting as the Board of Directors for the Mojave County Flood Control District, approve amendment number 4 to contracts number 13 PS 08, job order contract for channel maintenance with McCormick Construction Company, Bullhead City, Arizona Desert Construction Incorporated, Kingman, Arizona, FHI Plant Service Incorporated Bullhead City, and Lewis Equipment Services LLC, Kingman, Arizona, Vasco Incorporated, Chino Valley, Arizona, and RM Escavation and Grading LLC, Kingman, Arizona, extending the contracts for an additional two-month period from February 16, 2015, through April 15, 2016, with all other terms and conditions remaining the same. Okay, Supervisor Moss?
I pulled this item to recuse myself from the vote.
Can I make a motion to approve item 15?
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, going on to item 18, pulled by Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two reasons I pulled this. The first is to thank the people down there. Usually we have the nonprofit groups that raise money for food, and that, this is over $22,000 for paving at the parking lot, which is, you know, kind of goes above and beyond, and thankful for that. The second part would be, I guess, of the county manager. Are we gonna have Public Works oversee this? I know we've had problems in the past with library districts and other places that get a little ahead of themselves with projects when we have the staff here to do it.
Madam Chairman, if Supervisor Johnson, if you'd like, we can ask Steve Lutowski to come up and explain his plan for overseeing the project.
If he has a plan, that's all I was asking. I know in the past, we haven't, sometimes projects have gone ahead without Public Works' input, but Public Works will be involved in this?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Supervisor Johnson, yes, an excellent suggestion. Public Works will be overseeing the project. It will actually be procured through our procurement department, and we will have a point of contact from facilities to be able to oversee the project and its performance and delivery to the satisfaction not only of the county but especially of the senior centers.
Okay, so the proposal and stuff that was in the backup is not what we're going with?
Supervisor Johnson, yes, we are moving in that direction, but we will be formally procuring the project. But it will mimic exactly what the senior center board desires to have completed, and it will be overseen by facilities just as if it were one of the county's CIP projects.
Thank you. That's the only question I had. I'd make a motion to approve this item if there's no other questions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Supervisor Watson. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 30, approve the certificate of clearance to abate taxes on on-collected personal property in amount of $1,702.42. Supervisor Johnson, you pulled this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pull this like I pull all these. Personal property is due and delinquent the day it is due. This goes back to 2011. This property is a hotel. This property was sold to, I guess, the college in Lake Havasu ASU. It was in all the papers. They made dorms out of it. I don't understand how, when we're supposed to collect the personal property tax the next day, we can go from 2011 to this date. I mean, we just keep losing money, and everybody else has to pay their fair share of taxes. So wasn't really much we could do about it. I just wanted to bitch about it again.
All right, I certainly understand, and it's frustrating. Did you want the county treasurer to come up and explain how this one happened?
She's not here.
Oh, she's not here? Okay.
Oh, the assessor, maybe the assessor.
Mr. Fielder.
Mr. Fielder, maybe you can tell us again how this happens.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, maybe I can shed a little light on the issue. The Supervisor Johnson is correct. It's a personal property tax bill that's being asked to be abated, and I might like the board to recognize that the assessor's office has no responsibility or authority for abatements. We have the authority to correct tax roll, which is the current year and three years past. The treasurer and the board has the ability to do abatements. In this particular case, I believe that the item, the agenda item, is written in a misleading form. For example, it says the owner or his successors or assigns has not been located after delict search of the personal property by the sheriff's office. Well, obviously Supervisor Johnson is correct. We know where the property is. We know what the property is. However, the board needs to understand that personal property is a self-reporting activity. That's the business assets used in a business. The business owner files a Form 520 early in the year. We process, the assessor's office processes that meeting. We enter it into the computer. We depreciate it based on a table from the Department of Revenue. We pass the tax value over to the treasurer, and the treasurer then sends a tax bill. If the bill's not paid, then it's up to the treasurer to chase or collect the bill. And after they become delinquent at a certain point, the treasurer turns it over to the sheriff for enforcement. The problem with this particular account is it's a motel, and the personal property in this motel is generally the furnishings and fixtures within the motel units themselves. For example, window air conditioning units, the bed, the mattresses, the dressers, the TVs, the clocks, et cetera, are the personal property. It's a self-reported item, which means it's not itemized. So the taxpayer would send us a report saying they had $84,587 worth of furnishings that they purchased in 2006, but they don't identify what they are. There's no asset tags. There's no serial numbers. And so the sheriff can go to the motel, and they can recognize that there are assets there, but by the time they gather all the beds and the dressers and the chairs and put them in the parking lot, it would cost more money to take them to the dump than it would be to try to collect this tax bill. Now Supervisor Johnson is correct. This property currently is owned by the Arizona Board of Regents, which doesn't wipe out the tax bill. However, the board also needs to recognize that the property itself pays taxes. People don't pay taxes in Arizona. It's the property. So that means that if the sheriff really wanted to collect the money, they would have had to collect the chairs and the TVs, et cetera. It might have been in an argument with who bought that TV. Was it bought in '82 or was it bought in 2015? The long and short of it is we believe this bill should be abated, and it's, I think it could be written with more information so that there's not this ambiguity. But I would be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fielder. Do we have any questions from any of the board?
I have a question, ma'am. Personal property, they get an exemption up to what limit?
Good question. Currently, the limit is 152,926, and the 2011 bill was 67,268, which means that, for example, I worked on a bowling alley in Mojave Valley that's no longer in business. But at the time, the bowling, the lanes themselves, I'm gonna answer your question, the lanes themselves were considered personal property along with the pin setters, et cetera. So in that particular case, they had $1 million worth of acquisition costs, but by the time you applied the accelerated depreciation for the Department of Revenue, it was no longer a taxable account. So if you applied the exemption to this particular account, it would have wiped out the bill entirely. The problem with this bill is the taxpayer failed to report and failed to follow through. So had they worked with the assessor's office and we had known that, because they're only allowed to claim an exemption one time in the state of Arizona, and we have no idea whether they own other motels in Yuma County or Pima County or whatever, and so we did not apply the exemption.
Right, I appreciate that. I just wanted to bring up the fact that we keep losing these because we should immediately get on it. It used to be the constable's job.
Yes.
And I don't know, maybe that's something the board needs to look back at, saying, hey, we'll put the constables back there to immediately go out and do it. Because we do have, you know, honest businessmen that, you know, pay their taxes and do everything or people that have personal property, and I just hate to see people, especially when something so public as this. It's a hotel that you can see, and it was in the papers, and then while we have you up there, I did get my reevaluation, and I don't know if I could go over that while we're, I don't know. Maybe we'll see you afterwards, can't think.
Okay, Supervisor Moss, do you have any comments or questions? And Mr. Fielder?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll now go on to our public hearings. My opening public hearing on item number 37. Discussion of possible action, Ray adopt the revised fee schedule for Mojave County parks to include past emissions and reduce some standardized fees to be effective on February 16, 2016. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the call to the public. Is there, is there any of the supervisors that would like to make any comments on this?
If no one has anything to say, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I think Supervisor Moss, you voted on that. I didn't hear you. Did you hear him, Jenny?
I have no objection, voted yes.
Okay, thank you. You're being so quiet this morning, I don't want to forget you. Okay, going on to the regular agenda under Stephen Moss. Item number 38. Discussion of possible action, Ray direct staff to prepare and bring back a resolution calling upon the BLM to reduce the borough population to less than 817 within the next fiscal year or the county will: A) seek legislation authorizing state agencies to issue hunting permits to bring the local borough population within acceptable and safe limits; or B) pursue litigation to compel BLM to comply with the management plan. This was continued by the board after January 19, 2016, meeting. So Supervisor Moss, do you want to lead us out on this?
Yes. I believe we need to have a resolution. Supervisor Angus and I are going to Washington DC next week. We have the Game and Fish resolution. We have a past resolution. We have to decide whether or not we're gonna add to those prior resolutions or just reconfirm our support for those past resolutions. As stated before, and was reiterated during our workshop recently, we don't have a desire to hunt burrows, but we do have a desire that the population be got under control. Have BLM lead in getting those items, those, that population under control. What method they elect to utilize is hardly up to BLM. So we need to hear from the board as a whole what we should be doing on this.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Angus, do you have some comments?
Well, yeah, I would just make a motion that we do have, and we are going next week, so we will have to do this as a special meeting if we are to carry, hand-carry a resolution with us when we go to Washington. But I would say that we should bring it in line with the resolution that Arizona Game and Fish recently did, just because we are their partners, and they will be at this meeting as well. I understand that Larry Voiles, the head of Arizona Game and Fish, and Kurt Davis, the chairman of the Arizona Game and Fish Commission, will be at this meeting and Senator McCain's office with us. So it is our best opportunity to do this, and so I think we should get in line with Arizona Game and Fish. I think that's our best way.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Watson?
Just a thought. If we were to pursue another resolution and include the possibility of pursuing litigation, would that be something that you'd want to put forth?
I think that is what Arizona Game and Fish's resolution says, as a last resort. But yes, and I think we should.
My question is, do we want to do a separate?
I don't understand.
You want a separate resolution for the possibility of litigation from Mojave County?
I don't know. I don't know if that's necessary. If we can do it as part of, if we can look at maybe the resolution that Arizona Game and Fish did again, I think they put it all in one resolution, and so I think that's what I was talking about. So at least Washington knows that we are all in line.
Okay.
Supervisor Johnson?
The problem I have, I have no problem with the resolution, you know, to say we're gonna seek legislation. The shooting, I don't think we can legally do, so I don't know if I'd support that. But what are we, we're talking about burrows basically in the city limits of Bullhead. In the area where we have burrows on the highways in Oatman, we're just saying, oh, that's okay? Isn't that a little bit of a contradiction when we're, I mean, if I was them, I'd say, well, here, you guys, you know, allow all the burrows in your street. You stop traffic. You expect everybody to stop. We've had, I'm guessing over the years, more people attacked by the burrows in Oatman than we have had car wrecks. I mean, that kind of bothers me that we're saying, in one area, oh, we welcome the burrows, and in the other areas, we want to shoot the burrows.
Can I answer that? I think that if it gets back to the manageable levels as prescribed by US Fish, by BLM, which is 478, everything will go back. I mean, we didn't really have problems. I mean, we didn't really have problems when it was lesser population, and yeah, we know about the borough problems in there, but then there was always some, there was always an agreement between that community and BLM that worked. So, that will be in the discussion, I am sure. But again, if it gets back to the manageable population, I don't think we'll have the problems that, and Supervisor Bishop can talk about that in her district in, in Oatman, because it's really been a, kind of a recent event with the overpopulation of male burrows.
Well, they have been, I mean, the attacks on the people have been going on for numbers of years since, since I was in my area. I guess what I was trying to get at is, it seems like we encourage them to be in the streets up there, and then we don't want them in the other areas. That's just something I think somebody's going to throw back on us, saying, you guys can't have it both ways.
When, when we were up in Oatman, and again Supervisor Bishop can probably talk more about this, what we learned was that a lot of these burrows were there since they were babies, and so they've become, you know, I'm going to say domesticated, but tamer, and that's what, you know, brings in their visitors. Yeah, it's kind of sensitive, but again, yeah, there probably were some attacks, but not like it has been in, in recent couple of years, right?
It's, it's my understanding that the Oatman burrows has, has been kind of a exception in Mojave County for at least the last seven, eight years, maybe nine. It's, it's pretty recent that they became a tourist attraction in Oatman historically. And Supervisor Angus is correct, they are born and raised in the Oatman area, and they become accustomed to civilization and the people and the tourists, and the traffic is not the same problem as they have on the parkway, because the traffic cannot go through Oatman on most days faster than five miles an hour. They crawl through the town because of the pedestrian traffic, and of course, the burrows are in the middle of the road, like Supervisor Johnson alluded to. It, it is a problem that Mojave County has chose to ignore over all these years, and now the community count on the burrows to bring in the tourism. So, it's, it's a unique situation, and I, I think your concerns are legitimate. How do we say it's okay in Oatman and not okay for the rest of the county, so? But besides that, I, I think the, the game and fish resolution basically says what we would want our resolution to say. So, do we need a new resolution, or do we just need to present a letter signed by each of the board members saying that we support the game and fish resolution as, as written, so?
Play me.
Supervisor Watson?
Supervisor Angus, on your trip back, and I appreciate you making that trip along with Supervisor Moss, but I'm just wanting to make sure that the four-hundred-and-seventy-eight animal units that you're describing is for the Black Mountain ecosystem only. I have a great concern of the population of burrows moving throughout Mojave County and especially east in other watersheds and ecosystems there. We have an overpopulation currently of about eighteen-hundred that we know of in this area, but I'm, I'm kind of wondering if they're not counting those populations that are hidden to the east. So, please be aware that, you know, that there are populations east of Kingman. They're growing and they're becoming more of a nuisance in those riparian areas, so when you're addressing that, just if you bring it forth.
That's a good, that's a good point. And also at this meeting, and one of the reasons this is happening is because we've put together a River Counties Caucus, because it is a problem also in Yuma and in La Paz, and they will be at this meeting as well. So, it's, we're going to be talking about that, our whole River County area, not just the Black Mountain. Thank you for letting me say that. You're right.
And I wanted to bring up...
Madam Chair, if I may?
Supervisor Moss, go ahead.
First off, I think your idea of just the letter referencing our past resolutions and voicing our support of the game and fish resolution and joining into it via letter signed by each supervisor may be the fastest way to resolve this issue, so we know what our, I guess, our formal position is as a board. Secondly, it's not just Bullhead, and I think Supervisor Watson touched upon this, they're spreading throughout Mojave County. Lake Cavasou has had burrow incidents in the past in the northern portions of it, in the Desert Hills area. I believe those have been minimized because BLM erected some sensing, or ADOT erected some sensing, but the population is still there. It's, it's a Mojave County-wide problem. It exists in La Paz. Problem's also in Yuma. It's all along the river system.
Okay, I, I agree, and I also want to point out that the, the Black Mountain burrows are also pushing the cattle down into the Golden Valley area. I'm starting to get more and more complaints about the, the cattle that are coming down into the residential areas, and I, I think that's a direct result from having to forage with the burrows for the vegetation that's there, plus ATV'ers and recreators are leaving the gates and cutting wire fences and stuff, but, but that's beside the point. I think the, the fight for food and vegetation with wildlife and the cattle and the burrows have just got to the point where something needs to be done, so. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the board supervisors write a letter in support of the Arizona Game and Fish resolution to be signed by each of us or just by the chair?
Right by the chair. Be quicker and...
Yeah, to be signed by the chair.
Okay.
Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, going on to item thirty-nine. Discussion of possible action, Ray, Mojave County Kingman Animal Shelter Contract Number Fourteen, P. zero-nine, Animal Shelter Management Services. Direct staff as to how the board of supervisors wishes to proceed in this matter prior to contract expiration on June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. And in parentheses, increase, our wait. June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Okay, this is under Annie Newton-Furworth.
Good morning, supervisors. We placed this before the board. The, the staff's recommendation is actually to renew for an additional year period, but we wanted to bring this back to the board, because as you were aware, there were some issues last year in negotiating a renewal. So, we thought we would bring this open for discussion to you. According to statute, you have to have either an Arizona Incorporated Humane Society operated, or a veteran, or a cooperative agreement with a, a city. And when we did bid this for the, the two thousand and nine year, when we had a five-year contract awarded, it was to Western Arizona Humane Society. They were the only bidder that responded at that time. And then, when we rebid this in two thousand and fourteen, again, Western Arizona Humane Society was the only respondent. We did reach out to other counties, and at this time, there are none others that are interested in, in contracting with this. One of them mentioned that they, that they would not compete with another humane society. So, at this time, we have no other interest, so staff recommends that we renew for another year. And if that's the board's desire, I would request that you also authorize me to sign an amendment renewing it, and then I will bring it back to you before, when, under the procurement monthly report.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Do any of the supervisors have any comments, questions, starting with Supervisor Johnson?
Explain why you want to be able to sign an amendment?
It's just a procedure that we've done in the past, but I can certainly bring it back to the, the chairman. The only thing that would be on the amendment was that we would be renewing it for an additional one-year period through June of two thousand and seventeen, and we can have Chairman Bishop authorize the signature at a later date.
Right, I think that would, my preference would be to have whatever you, you negotiate brought back for, for the chairman's signature.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Supervisor Moss, are you good?
Yeah, I approve, I would approve extending the contract to Western Arizona Humane Society. I think they do a fabulous job.
And this, this contract is an increase, an agreed-upon increase from two-hundred-thousand to two-hundred-and-sixty thousand for this new contract?
That was the agreed-upon increase from last year, when we renewed it through this year of June. There's, when staff contacted them about their interest in renewing, they said that they would be interested in renewing for a one-year period with no contract modifications. So, there would not be an increase for this, next year.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion then.
Motion to approve item thirty-nine.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to approve. Did I hear a second from Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, moving on to item number forty. Discussion of possible action, Ray, one, approve the twenty-sixteen housing and community development needs. Two, identify and prioritize projects for twenty-sixteen CDBG regional account and twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen CDBG state special project account program listed on the attached memorandum dated February fourth, two thousand and sixteen. And three, direct staff to determine program eligibility of these projects and prepare grant applications for submission. Do we have Suzy here? Suzy Duranzo, she's our Community Services Director. Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman Bishop and members of the board, good morning. Just a brief background, twenty-sixteen is the turn for Mojave County to submit an application for a community development black grant program. And on January thirteenth, we did have an initial public hearing, and in that public hearing, we solicited community development needs and also projects. And as you have, as part of the backup for the memorandum that we have submitted to you, we have approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, and I say approximate because the final allocation for this year has not yet been approved, so we're doing an estimate amount that may be available to Mojave County. At this point, on attachment A, you have the community development, development needs in our community. If you have any question, we would be here to answer that. On attachment B, we have some recommendations of projects. We did receive a couple of projects, but based on the direction of the board on identifying a countywide project and the fact that some of the projects withdrew after the technical assistance program that has been provided to them, we finally have three options for a regional account that's in front of you. We have the West Care Inc. Homeless Veteran Shelter. We also have the Mojave County Community Services Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program, and we also have the Cornerstone Mission, a purchase of a vehicle to transport their clients. These are three options for a regional account. The board may select one or a combination of one and two, but we suggest and we recommend that we have an alternate projects also for the regional account. In addition to that, we also have a state special projects account. Again, this is a competitive application process. It's not an assurance we're going to get anything from this process, but we always give it a try. So, we would like the board to give us permission to submit an application on a state special project, competitive application for our own community services, owner occupied housing programs, so that we can continue helping our, our citizens in Mojave County. So, we have, my staff is here to be able to answer any questions that you may have regarding the needs of our community, or the projects that are being presented to you, or even the projects that got withdrawn towards the end. Any questions? We'll be here to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Duranzo. I'll ask for questions, comments from all of the board, starting with Supervisor Moss.
Thank you, Ms. Director Duranzo. Looking through the various projects, I prefer the, the veteran shelter through West Care. I think it's something that we need. Arizona has the highest per capita percentage of veterans, I believe, in the United States, or at least one of the highest in Mojave County. Is the highest, or at least one of the highest counties of veterans population within Arizona. We have a lot of veterans, there's a lot in need. I think it's a wonderful countywide project that all of Mojave County can point to and be proud of.
Okay, thank you very much Supervisor Moss. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any comments?
Yes, I, I prefer the owner occupied housing rehabilitation, where it can hit all districts and can be used in the past to preference for veterans at the same time, but at least that hits every, every area.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Watson?
I certainly have a preference for the vets, but I would like for Ms. Duranzo to point out to the rest of the board, the number of successes we've had in applying for the special projects. Seems to me in the past that we've won those challenges almost every year, so if you could highlight a little bit of that, please, Ms. Duranzo?
Yes, Supervisor Watson, thank you very much. We do apply competitively on a statewide basis for projects, under state special projects, and yes, we probably have about ninety-five percent rate success in, in applying for them. Last year, we did apply, but we didn't get it for some technical issue in our grant application. But yes, we've been successful, but knowing that there's a lot of projects in the state, you know, and it's a competitive basis, we do try our best to put a nice application together for other projects that may not be assigned on the regional account, and we've been successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duranzo.
Okay, Supervisor Angus?
Hi there. First of all, I, I need to disclose that I, I'm on the, it's called the CAC, it's a Community Advisory Council for West Care, who is an applicant here. I do not, it's not the board of directors, I do not benefit financially or anything. It's, we meet once, it's, I represent the county, you know, to advise about the needs of the community, that's it. And I believe, and what I've been hearing from the community, from all over the county, is this need for veterans. We've been, we've had some hit and misses with some other organizations. There is a need here for years. They've been trying to get some kind of shelter. We don't have, there are veterans sleeping on the streets, and I believe this is our best opportunity going forward, and I was excited to, to, to see this come up for a CDBG grant, and, and I will be supporting that one. But I do think it's interesting, because I didn't know, like Supervisor Watson was saying, that there is an opportunity to get money to, for the housing rehab projects. So, I, I think that you answered my question with Supervisor Watson. So, you usually, historically, you have gotten them, there was some kind of technicality last year, but we'll fix that technicality, and perhaps we can, we can get both, and that would be, that would be great.
Supervisor Angus, yes, actually, the technicality last year was not on our end. It's a requirement by the state. They did require that we had a sign-up sheet for the board of supervisor meetings, and I told them we don't normally have that. So, this year, they removed that as a requirement, so.
Okay, good.
Going to try again. However, though, you know, we do still recommend that if there is a project for the regional account, we do have an alternative, just in case something happens on the number one, project one, that we can still go to project two.
So, so for the motion going forward, today, we, we prioritize them, we pick a one, two, and a three, just so if number one falls out for whatever reason, there's a number two.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, if I understand this right, the, the veterans seem, seem to have the biggest need in Mojave County, and then the owner occupied housing would, would be my choice for the alternate. So, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we, as our first priority, support the homeless veterans center rehabilitation of the current cries building for homeless veterans center, including provisions for support services and counseling for twenty beds serving approximately fifty homeless veterans. As the second, secondary choice, as our alternative choice, I believe we should support Mojave Community Services Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program for low-income priority population residents in Mojave County to assist approximately nine families throughout Mojave County, Arizona.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second, the motion?
Discussion.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson, under discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the main problems I have is that if we go back, and it's in the backup for everybody to see, in ninety-three, we gave two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars to rehab this piece of property, which was given to cries, which is now West Care. And now it needs to be redone again, and now we're going to put another three-hundred and it's in the backup for everybody to see, in ninety-three, we gave two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars to rehab this piece of property, which was given to Crye, which is now West Care. And now it needs to be redone again, and now we're going to put another three-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars into this piece of property. And the, at that time, it was for troubled kids. Attorney Extron probably knows the name better than I did, but they, they just ran off contracts with the county and, and I guess other people too, but it was closed down. I'm not seeing a good history of being able to follow through with things, and that's one reason that I'm very hesitant about doing this, because we've given them free land, we've given them, now, if we go ahead with this, we'll be giving them another six-hundred-thousand dollars, giving them a total of six-hundred-thousand dollars. It just doesn't seem like a good move to me.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Supervisor Moss, you have the floor?
I am referring, I'm going back to a decade or more when I was a young lawyer, and my understanding is Crye Shelter is originally, when it was a youth, a dependent youth shelter dealing with children who needed to be housed pending foster care and elsewhere, that there was a change in state law adversely impacted the continued operation of that facility. I believe West Care has been a very good partner for the community. They've never stabbed us in the back. If they've dropped the ball, it's because other people have missed them. And I, I think that we can, we, we should, West Care's got a track record in many different states, including Mojave County, including Nevada, including all of Arizona. And I think they'd be a good trustee, they'd be a good depositor of our trust on this and other issues.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, can we also vote on the approval of the community development needs, because it's, it's going to be part of our application, and also allowing us to submit for the competitive application for the state special project for fiscal year sixteen and seventeen? We need a motion for that as well.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to adopt Ms. Duranzo's statement as a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Moss. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, do we have any further discussion?
I'd just like to have the clerk reaspect what she thinks the motion is.
I would ask that Ms. Duranzo repeat it for me.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, the motion would be to approve the community development needs as presented in our public hearing, and also to authorize staff to apply for the owner-occupied rehabilitation program for fiscal year twenty-sixteen and twenty-seventeen under the state special projects account.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item number forty-one, discussion of possible action reference acknowledged receipt of draft number thirty-three for review and subsequent placement on the March twenty-first, twenty-sixteen Board Meeting for Discussion, proposed revisions to the document from the Board to be compiled by Human Resources. Mr. Cunningham? There you are.
Good morning, Chairman Bishop and Board of Supervisors. The personnel policies were tabled at the July sixth Board Meeting pending the PTO discussions, and what this is, is just bringing back that policies and procedures with the change of putting the PTO, the PTO is in version thirty-four. That's the only change from thirty-three to thirty-four. So, we'd just like to bring this back and let the board review it for further discussion at the second meeting in March.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do any of the board have any questions for Mr. Cunningham? Okay.
Thank you very much.
We do have one person that signed up to speak on this item, Mr. Steve Robinson. If you'll state your name, your address.
Steve Robinson, Golden Valley. This is going to a public hearing, it seems, but I have a question about something, and maybe Mr. Cunningham can ask that question. In section four-point-one, political activity, this subsection language is much stronger than the current merit rules, which states that anybody that might be fully funded by federal of programs, that they should review the law to see if they're, if it's legal for them to remain employees and run for office. However, the new provision says employees subject to the Federal Hatch Act or Arizona's Little Hatch Act are prohibited from being coming candidates for paid partisan political office or taking active part in the management of political or partisan political office. Subsection two, or paragraph two says, any employee that may be subject to Arizona's Little Hatch Act if their salary is paid in whole or in part through state grants and are deemed a state employee. I was aware that Mojave County had a Little Hatch Act which prevents political activity on, during their duty hours, but I have not yet looked or seen in, in either Title sixteen on elections, Title thirty-five on county employees, or Title forty-one on government, state government management, anything that would, we would call a Hatch Act. So, I would ask if, is there anything there? Because I've had more than one employee of the county ask me about that and say, Steve, what's going on here? They obviously are wisely not calling directly because they're, for their fears, but they asked, why is this language now restricting them? This is what happened in November of eleven. It was proposed by then-county manager Ron Walker that we do the same thing, and it appears that's what's happened here. So, I'd love to have that question asked. Where is there an Arizona's Little Hatch Act?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cunningham, can you address that?
Chairman Bishop, I don't believe I can answer the full question, but when we did the political activities, we took the, the state, or the ARS sixteen-three-eleven, and that's what we used. So, when the panel created this policy, they used the state and federal regulations to create this policy. We didn't go above or beyond what the state and federal already had, so that's where I believe this came from.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Extron, do you have anything you can add to that?
Madam Chairman, only to say this, my understanding the state has adopted the provisions of the Federal Hatch Act for the state of Arizona.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, discussion from the board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Okay. All right, so we don't need a motion on that. We'll go on to item number forty-two. Are we good? Are we good? All right, item number forty-two, discussion of possible action, ray, continued employment of Harry Moore, Mojave County Public Defender. This is under County Manager Michael Hendricks.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. What I'm asking the board to do today is to concur with my recommendation to terminate the employment of Harry Moore as Public Defender.
Okay, thank you. It's my understanding that Harry Moore wanted to speak, and he has signed up. Mr. Moore, if you'd like to address the board?
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Harry Moore. I live at thirty-three, thirty-four, Armour Lane, apartment number one, Kingman, Arizona. Good morning, Chairperson Bishop, members of the Board of Supervisors. I am the Mojave County Public Defender, and I have been for two and a half years. It's been my honor, my honor to have served the citizens of Mojave County for that time period. For members of the public that don't know, the Public Defender's Office has thirteen lawyers, ten support staff, a budget of one-point-eight million dollars. Our primary job is to represent persons charged with crime when we're appointed by a judge. I have not been told what the reasons are, or if indeed there are reasons for Mr. Hendricks' recommendation. Considering the nature of communications he has sent my way in the last six months, I believe he has expected me to follow his orders in running the Public Defender's Office. This I cannot do. The Public Defender's Office is a law office, even though it's a county office. State law, by state law, the public defender must be a lawyer. A non-lawyer such as Mr. Hendricks cannot be the public defender, nor can a non-lawyer be a de facto public defender by telling the public defender what to do in any aspect of performance of legal duties. Mr. Hendricks has endeavored for months to tell me what types of cases to assign to whom, what I should do in managing the office, who should cover which courts, who is a qualified job applicant, et cetera. He has directed me to ignore case load limits. I consider these actions to be the unauthorized practice of law, which a lawyer is forbidden from assisting. If I were to yield to Mr. Hendricks' demands, I would also be violating the professional rules of conduct for allowing a non-lawyer to interfere with my professional judgment. These rules are promulgated by the Arizona Supreme Court, are mandatory, and regulate the conduct of all Arizona lawyers. I will not violate the rules of professional conduct. In short, Mr. Hendricks may supervise regarding general county policy, the budget, et cetera, but for anything pertaining to the practice of law, I will answer to the Arizona Supreme Court. I request that Mr. Hendricks' recommendation be rejected, and that I be reinstated immediately. At the time of my being placed on administrative leave, I was carrying one-hundred-and-fifty-eight cases, twice the caseload of any other lawyer in the office, with one exception. I doubt that replacement representation has been found for most of that number yet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Do any of the supervisors have any questions? Okay, CNN, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Moss.
That we terminate the employment of Harry Moore, Mojave County Public Defender per the recommendation of County Administrator Mike Hendricks.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number forty-three. Sending as the Board of Directors for the Mojave County Flood Control Districts, discussion on possible action ray, authorize eliminating the Development Services Flood Control Division Flood Warning Supervisor, position number ten-thirty, and relocate essential job functions and subordinate staff to Flood Plane Programs Manager, position two-zero-zero-five-three-two, Civil Engineer Registered, position number two-zero-zero-eight-two-eight-N, Drainage Maintenance Supervisor, position two-zero-one-one-zero-one, and further approve salary adjustments for position number two-zero-zero-five-three-two from range twenty-four step three to range twenty-four step five, for position number two-zero-zero-eight-two-eight from range twenty-two step six to range twenty-two step eight, and for position number two-zero-one-one-zero-one from range seventeen step five-point-five to range seventeen step seven-point-five, resulting in an overall savings in salary expenses to the Flood Controlled District Fund in the amount of fifty-four thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-nine annually.
Madam Chair, if nobody has any questions, a motion approved.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, I think we do have one person signed up to speak on this item. Before we call for the vote, Mr. Steve Robinson. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Stephen Robinson, Golden Valley. The flood warning system that we heard about earlier was set up by the now-vacant position Flood Plane System Supervisor, who retired last summer. He did a lot of work in preparing that system. What this is, offer is doing, again, it's like thirty-three, in an era where we've been saying we have no money, and you're taking and giving ten percent, ten and a quarter to ten-point-three percent raises to three people out of a staff of, you know, where there's an eight-to-nine-hundred-thousand-dollar budget for payroll. And I'm wondering, you know, there's been a, except for a two-and-a-half percent raise two years ago across the board, there has been no raises in Mojave County for the rank-and-file employees since two thousand and seven. However, when you look at the budget reports from that time forward, in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, we're paying out the same amount in salaries and benefits, or salaries, each of them, a little bit more in sal, in benefits than we were in two thousand and seven. However, according to Supervisor Johnson last summer, we've cut down from fourteen-hundred employees back then to where at the current list on the directory, there's about eleven-hundred-and-fifty employees. So, somebody's been getting raises if we're paying the same amount out in salaries, but we have two-hundred-and-fifty less employees. Those are the numbers, and we can't argue with those numbers. That's what's happened. And it seems like this is an example where people may be well-deserving of raises, we don't know, but the vast majority of employees for the county have not received a raise, except for that two-and-a-half percent, which was then eaten up by the PSPRS increases. In that twenty-three item, you saw a county planner making over forty-two thousand dollars, and yet a detention personnel making thirty-thousand dollars. I think we have our priorities misplaced, and I think you're doing a disservice to the rest of the county employees by giving ten-and-a-quarter percent raises to three people, and how many other times has that happened over the last several years? And that's kind of frustrating, watching what we as taxpayers have to see as far as money going out. I just hope you would reconsider this, because clearly, there's a problem with, when the rank-and-file employees are not getting any raises, and we have the upper staff and management getting ten percent raises, it really looks bad to the public, and it looks bad to the staff. Thank you, have a good day.
Mr. Robinson, I have one question for you. Could you please give me your background in, in financial education? Are you an accountant, a CPA?
I have been a tax accountant for thirty-five years. I sat for the CPA exam without an accounting degree, and in fact, without an accounting class. I taught myself accounting from the ground floor up. If, so if you want to question my bona fides, I did pass two of the five parts of the CPA exam back in nineteen eighty-six, which was the last year. You could take that exam without having a bachelor's degree in accounting. Is it my regret that I never went back and picked up that degree? Yeah. Or picked up that CPA designation? Yes, it is my regret. I taught myself in a period of three months, from December of eleven to March of twelve, government accounting. I'm a very good learner, and I work hard. And in that time, I was defending the county by saying to people who said the county's corrupt. I said, no, they're not. We may have a few out-of-control issues.
Mr. Robinson, I think you've answered my question, and now I understand why some of the things you say are, are not exactly right on, but I appreciate your explanation and.
I have better understanding than anybody else on that table up there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Mr. Hendricks, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, Madam Chairman, and thank you very much. Earlier on, looking at the finances of the county, one of the things that I proposed to my management group was if they could find areas that they could right-size and downsize, I would, I would allow them to provide me proposals that would actually save the county money, and those people that were taking on additional duties, the proposals would include those individuals getting some benefit for taking on the additional duties. And we'd have it reviewed, the additional duties reviewed by HR, and come up with a recommendation. I told them that I wouldn't consider dollar-for-dollar. I said if they came to me with a eighty percent savings for the county and a twenty percent save, addition to the employees, that would be very beneficial. You know, if it was something a little less than that, you know, I would consider it. I told my management group that I would package those proposals and bring them to the board for the board to make a business decision on whether the board would want to save money in lieu of, of sharing. And this proposal that Nick Hahn is proposing does completely eliminate the one position in lieu of the three individuals sharing in the responsibilities for operating the system. Not only have they taken over, these individuals taken over the early warning system, they've actually improved it from the tremendous job that Fred Wiremiller did before. So, they're doing a fantastic job. I ask that you consider this proposal, and it does save the county fifty thousand dollars, which I think's phenomenal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor and a second.
I have a comment.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Watson.
I'm a little bit taken back by some of the comments earlier by a person from the audience about the uneducated board that I sit with. I believe that everybody sitting on the DS has a great understanding of our current situation and our finances and our budget. And I would just like to say, whenever we ask people to shoulder more responsibility and shoulder more work, it's certainly within the things that we ought to do is reward them for doing that. And I just go back to my rural roots, I suppose. When you're packing an extra ten pounds on your, on your packhorse, you better pack an extra pound of reward at the end, or you're not going to get to your destination. So hopefully, everybody can understand that. But that's my position. If we're going to ask these people to do more, shoulder more, we need to pay them more. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Supervisor Moss, go ahead.
I first want to say that I want to applaud County Administrator Hendricks for finding a way to save the county fifty-four thousand dollars by, I believe the term he used, right sizing various departments. I believe that if you want to encourage people to find the ways, positions which can be eliminated, you must create a financial incentive, because otherwise they will not speak up. Having said that, I also want to appreciate the members of the audience, including Mr. Robinson, their engagement in public discourse. Even if we don't agree with what people are saying, we need to hear what they have to say. So even though I approve of Mr. Hendrix's, and I'm going to vote in favor of this motion, because I do approve of his conduct here, this fifty thousand dollars is five percent of a million. Can stack a few of these up, we solve a few of our budget woes. I also want to make sure that Mr. Hendricks is not, excuse me, Mr. Robinson is not spurred from future participation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Angus.
You know, I agree with Supervisor Watson. You know, it's, it's good to, to compensate people for the work they do, and again, I think that it backs up what I've been saying for a long time now, that we got to do things differently, because it sets up a situation that, you know, the member of the audience, Steve Robinson, that it sets up this thing, oh, why not us? We're doing the same thing, you know? It seems like special considerations given to one department. I mean, if we said, okay, all departments, see how you could tighten up, and you know, how you could maybe put together jobs that would save money, but we don't do that. And that's why it ends up looking bad. It's just perception. Of course, this is a good thing. But I wish that we can take it further and do this in every department, and that is what, you know, we're, we're trying to research and find out ways that we can do that, compensate people based on their merit, not some archaic steps and that just sets up jealousy and sets up bad morale. And, and we go through this every single time that we have an item like this on the agenda, and I just, I find, I find it uncomfortable, and I wish we could change it. Thank you.
Okay, I have to agree with Supervisor Angus and Moss, Johnson, Watson. It's, it's a good thing that we're able to save fifty-four thousand dollars, but as I've been saying since I was first elected to this position, I think Mojave County needs to look at the salaries of all the employees, including the Sheriff's Office, and do some type of a in-house compensation study, and get everybody on the, on the same plane field based on their merit and their position with the, with the departments. But we can't do that if we don't have the money, so we're doing the best we can, and we are compensating some people, and others are waiting patiently, and I hope that wait will not be very long. So I'll now call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, item number forty-four, discussion on possible action ray allow the World War Two memorial plaque refurbished by the Marine Corps League and the Veterans Council with the help of Home Depot to be located to the lobby of Mojave County Administration Building, where it can be better accessed and secured, and authorize the various veterans service organizations to hold a dedication ceremony at the County Administration Building on Memorial Day, Monday, May thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, to honor Mojave County World War Two veterans and all veterans who have fought for our country. Okay, I'd like to ask Terry Flanagan and Pat Farrell to come forward and give us a little presentation of what it is that they're planning to do.
This plan started several years ago as a law enforcement officer and commander with the Marine Corps League. When I observed that our plaque of our World War Two veterans is sitting what's now the dead-end hallway in the courthouse, due to security reasons, no one sees it. Names have been missing, and people have taken them because they're family members going back years. We felt, and then I partnered with the Veterans Council, that we needed to do something to get those names out there where the citizens can see it. So as you've read, that's what we put together, and President Farrell has a couple of comments, too.
Yeah, in nineteen forty-one, when the Japanese dropped the bomb and started our entry into World War Two, there were about eight thousand residents in Mojave County, twenty-seven hundred here in Kingman, and the rest of them spread over the five or six towns that was here. Out of that eight thousand, a miracle of over nine hundred signed up and enlisted or were drafted into service in World War Two. And that is one of the reasons I love Mojave County. Okay, the people here are very patriotic and in defense of their country, and I think that we, by partnering with supervisors and Home Depot, and getting this plaque back out where it can see, the one in ten remaining World War Two veterans will be able to be honored the way they should be.
The one, the one final comment here is, you've been talking a lot about budget and money. We know the county doesn't have it. Home Depot supports veterans in our community, so I went to them with no cost. We are going to help them take it down. It'll be taken to a location, refinished. If you've ever seen that plaque and you're trying to find a relative, it is not in alphabetical order. They will put the names back in alphabetical order, refurbish it, and then help us put it in the lobby area here.
Terry, do you want to show the audience the...
The one is the original design that's in the courthouse. The other one, and I had discussed it with Supervisor Bishop and County Administrator Hendricks, rather than redo the entire design, the idea was to take the original plaque because of its historic background and redo that and place it in the lobby out front here with Home Depot's help.
Okay, thank you, and I'm honored that you're willing to, to take this under your wing and get it done, and let us put it in our lobby for everyone to enjoy. Does anybody have any comments I'd like to make?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I guess one comment I have is, it bothers me that we have such security in our courthouse, but yet this plaque is allowed to be vandalized, and it's kind of surprising to me. The other one is, is more of a bookkeeping. You're talking about having a service on Memorial Day to do this, there's going to be, the building's not open that day, so somebody's going to have to pay for security on that day. So that's something you're going to have to look at, see who's going to pay for that.
Supervisor Johnson, I think we can deal with the security firm for one officer, and between the Marine Corps League and the council, we'll, for the two hours it may take, I think we can find the funds to pay that officer for his security time, or possibly ask the sheriff to have an officer present.
Thank you. I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, that it's not a regular day, so we'll need some kind of security.
Yes, sir. With that many veterans, I don't think security would be an issue.
All righty, thank you very much, gentlemen, and I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve, allow the World War Two memorial plaque to be refurbished and then brought into the, to this building.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I look forward to seeing it on display here. Thank you very much.
We thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number forty-five, discussion on possible action ray and update on the Zika virus. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe we can have Ms. Mead come up to give us kind of an update. When I put this on, it was just kind of getting started, and since then, the threat, I believe, has gone up, and I thought it was just something to let the public know that, you know, our head's not buried in the sand, that we do have a plan in place in case something does happen. Ms. Mead.
Thank you, Madam Chair and supervisors. I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on our latest public health threat called Zika. You've probably already been watching the TV and have read various things about it, so my update will be brief, but it's primarily spread through the bite of the infected eighties mosquito. And the common symptoms of Zika are just like everything else, just about fever, rash, joint pain, and some red eyes. The illness is usually mild and lasts for about a week, and eighty percent of people have no symptoms, which is a concern. There is no vaccine or medicine to prevent, treat, or treat Zika. And although severe disease is uncommon, usually we just recommend that people get rest, drink fluids to prevent dehydration, take Tylenol to reduce fever and pain, and see your doctor. Zika is currently not in the United States, but cases have been reported in returning travelers. So we haven't actually had mosquito-borne infection here, but we've had it in returning travelers. Outbreaks of Zika have been reported in Africa, Southeast Asia, the Pacific Islands, and most recently in the Americas. And in May of two thousand and fifteen, the Pan American Health Organization issued an alert regarding the first confirmed case of Zika in Brazil. No Zika cases have been identified in Arizona. Zika remains in the blood of an infected person for about a week, can be found in some people a little bit longer. And because Zika can be found in the blood and can pass from an infected person to another, mosquito bites are what we're worried about. If a mosquito bites a person with positive Zika virus, they can then turn around, they have, they're carrying the Zika virus now, and bite someone else. So think about that when I get to the part about how we're going to prevent this here in Mojave County. The same mosquito that carries Zika virus also carries dengue fever and chikungunya, which are also concerns this past couple of years here in Arizona. They're aggressive daytime biters. They do not just bite at dusk and day, and dawn like many mosquitoes. They are aggressive daytime biters. They prefer to bite people, not other animals, and they live indoors and outdoors near people. There are several conditions associated with Zika. Microcephaly, which you've probably heard about, which is smaller than expected head size, and possible fetal losses in babies born to mothers who've been infected with Zika while pregnant. Sometimes these babies also don't develop properly. Zika can be passed from a mother to her baby during pregnancy. However, studies are still being done to determine how some mothers pass the virus to their babies and some don't. To date, there are no reports of infants getting Zika virus through breastfeeding. There are also reports of Guillain-Barre being associated with Zika virus. Guillain-Barre is an uncommon sickness of the nervous system in which a person's immune system damages the nerve cells, causing muscle weakness and paralysis. The CDC is still studying Zika and Guillain-Barre to determine if there is a relationship. As of recently, there has been spread of the virus through blood transfusion and sexual contact. These are being reported. There is a lot of medical evidence to, to show that they don't think it's going to be widespread, but the virus can be sexually transmitted by a man to his sexual partners. They haven't noticed it being able to pass by a woman to her sexual partners yet. Knowledge of the link between Zika virus and birth defects is evolving, and so until more is known, the CDC is recommending special precautions for pregnant women. They are recommending that pregnant women in any trimester consider postponing travel to any area where Zika virus is spreading. So how do we prevent it here in Mojave County? Where, first, we're asking people to protect yourself and your family from mosquito bites by wearing long-sleeved shirts and long pants. I realize in the summertime, that can be difficult when we have mosquito season, but if you get thinner fabrics, sometimes that will help. Stay inside where there's air conditioning or where you have window and door screens. And last, but certainly not least, use an EPA-registered insect repellent. These are safe for children, pregnant women, and breastfeeding women. However, we don't usually recommend that we use insect repellents on babies if they're less than two months of age. The CDC has activated its Emergency Operations Center at Level One, reflecting the need for accelerated preparedness to bring together experts and try to study what's going on here and work efficiently in anticipation of local Zika transmission. Mojave County Department of Public Health activated our Incident Command System this past week and is having regular emergency response team meetings. Our key message today is prevention. Source reduction is critical. If citizens want to prevent Zika virus from coming to Mojave County, the most important thing you can do is to get rid of standing water. This has been our message for years with West Nile virus and with chikungunya and dengue fever, but if we don't want Zika to come here and perhaps cause harm to our citizens, everybody needs to be responsible for getting standing water, rid of it on their property and their surrounding neighborhood. Flower pots, old tires, even things as simple as a can, a bottle can with water in it, or bottle can top, sorry, can actually be breeding grounds for these types of mosquitoes. Washing out your dog dish that's left outside with soap and water and refilling it daily will help eliminate the possibility of eggs. And covering other areas that are long stand, that have standing water in it, for example, a kiddie pool. I know you probably don't want to dump it out every day, so covering it, covering it when you're not in it will help to prevent the larvicide from, from patching. This will do the most we can for preventing Zika virus and dengue and chikungunya here in Mojave County. If we work together as citizens and protect our neighborhoods, we can protect ourselves, and together we can fight the bite.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I guess, Madam Chair, some of the questions I have, I mean, obviously, we don't want to panic anybody, but I think we need to take it pretty seriously, because they're getting, what, five hundred cases a day reported down in, in Brazil?
Yes.
I mean, that's a lot, and with the Olympics coming up, people are bringing it back, and while you kind of downplay, there still has been passed through basically sexual transmissions. I mean, and so there, it has a...
Yes, in one case so far.
Right. It has the ability to do that, and like you're saying, with people coming back and not knowing it, it's, it could be serious, so I'm glad that we're at least taking that...
That's why we recommend that if you're pregnant, or if you think you might be pregnant, that you avoid travel at this time. It's just not worth the risk. And that everybody start managing their property, their own personal property with standing water. If we want to prevent this from coming here, that will be the biggest thing we can do as a citizenry, is to have no standing water anywhere so they can't breed.
I think so, and it could add to other problems, because I think they're estimating it's going to be a hit of, what, fifty-five billion dollars to tourism in, in South America and Mexico, so that's going to mean more people coming back across the borders again. That's all I had, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments, questions?
Supervisor Johnson promised to cover his kiddie pool.
Okay. All right, with that being said, I don't think we need a motion on this. Thank you very much, Patty.
No.
Okay, going on to item forty-six, discussion on possible action reference and update on the February ninth, two thousand and sixteen Mojave County Transportation Commission meeting. Supervisor Johnson, you...
Madam Chair, I just had a question of Mr. Lutowski. After we had our last meeting and we reauthorized the Transportation Commission for a year, I noticed an agenda came out for a Transportation Commission meeting. And seeing as we hadn't really had a, an itemized meeting where we actually did work, it surprised me that this meeting seemed to be just a carryover of a meeting before, with both items being carried over. Can you explain that to me, how that happened, or was that, am I reading it correctly?
Yes, Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, the January meeting of the Transportation Commission considered two public petitions to establish county highways. One to Peach Drive in the Golden Valley area, as well as Fairway Drive and the Rolling Ridge Drive in the White Hills area. They're both connecting roads. What happened in January was the Commission, you know, worked to evaluate and discuss those two petitions. I must add that I was not present. I had another county commitment to attend to, and potentially that may have influenced the Commission, or for whatever regard, into, into caring, continuing, if you will, those two items to the February meeting. So a meeting was held, it's typically the second Tuesday in the month, and February ninth, the Commission reconsidered those items, and they did take action on, on both of those items. The meeting was very heavily attended by twenty-one persons from the public that did not include the Commissioners and Supervisor Bishop and staff.
Right, I guess what bothers me is we, we continued this, yet we have... Right, I guess what bothers me is we, we continued this, yet we have board members that who obviously weren't prepared to do the meeting. We had, not only did we put our staff out, cost us staff time, we also had the people who had put in for these roads, had then to come back twice to get it through. It just, it just hit me as odd that we were here putting something through when the board only had one meeting, and they had to continue that because they weren't ready. That, that was the only reason I brought it up. Thank you, Ms. Lutowski.
Okay, we do have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Steve Robinson. Name and address, please.
Steve Robinson, Golden Valley. I am pleased that Supervisor Johnson put this on the agenda. I did attend both meetings, and the reason why both items were continued was there was people on the Commission who wanted to get a closer look at the roads and review other issues regarding to Pete's. And unfortunately, the person regarding White Hills Road, Frank Smiriglio, hadn't been properly notified, so that's why they continued that item. And there was a lot more than the twenty-one people because several people either signed up as couples, and I didn't get a chance to sign up on the list. There was closer to thirty. One person said there was fifty, but I think he was a politician. There was about thirty people that attended the meeting, and there was some very interesting discussion about the roads. One of the things that was pointed out was that last year, the Commission and the Board of Supervisors approved Pated Rock Road as a county highway. That road had, went by a, of winery in, of, in Valley Vista, just north, and that road had a traffic count of a hundred and sixty-nine people. To Pete's, which the Board, the Commission approved, had a traffic count of two hundred and twenty-eight people. And I thought that was good, that, and I supported To Pete's, even though in the strict definition of-
Mr. Robert Robinson, I think you're getting off topic. The, the item says-
Well, okay.
Discussion on possible action reference and update on the February ninth, twenty sixteen Mojave County Transportation-
Well, I'm describing what happened in the meeting, and I think that would be an appropriate topic, describing how the meeting proceeded. At least, am I incorrect on that, talking about the efficacy, the benefit of that meeting? It was really a very well-attended, very well-spoken meeting, and it was an approval of two, one road was approved, and I believe the other one was denied because of the lack of traffic count. And I think that's why it's, you know, going over these roads is something that's very beneficial for the public. I think it's unfair to say that the public isn't experts on the road and that only the people working in the staff, because the same could be said for the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the Commissioners that sit on that are not experts, but they are the Citizens Advisory Committee. And as Carmen Johnson said earlier, it's not removing a layer of government, it's getting rid of the voice of the people. And they're the people that make a commitment to work on behalf of the county as citizens to provide their input and insight, and I think that's what makes the Commission a valuable thing, and that's why I'm glad that Supervisor Johnson put it on the agenda for today to discuss that meeting. The reason it was carried forward, those two, was because they wanted more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't believe we need a motion on this item either, so we'll move on to item number forty-seven A, discussion on possible action, reconsideration of item number forty from the Board September twenty-first, twenty fifteen. So Supervisor Moss, this is under your name.
Yes, I put it on the agenda because, and it's really concerning forty-seven A, forty-seven B, and forty-eight, is the Finance Department informed me that the Board had said to them, wait till April until you had the data necessary to make a recommendation on the courthouse issue, financially speaking. And then I was informed that they have that information now, and there was no reason to wait till April, so I had to put it back on the agenda for the Board to take action as, as we desire. I think whether to redo the reconsideration and move on to forty-seven B, or we have input now, either way is fine with me, but I think we should hear from Mr. Hendricks and Ms. Lloyd.
Okay, Coral Lloyd.
Madam Chair, we have to have a reconsideration first, if they're going to do anything.
I make a motion to approve forty-seven A, motion to reconsider item forty from the Board's September twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen meeting.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, Ms. Lloyd, I think you can talk to us.
Good morning. Attached to item number forty-eight, I drafted a memo in regard to the question about potential funding specifically for the courthouse, and then elaborated a little bit on capital project financing overall. Since we met in September, we're nearly finished with the actual audit from the prior year. The balance, we've also spoken with the trustee for the debt service of the jail and communicated with the bond counsel for payoff of the jail facility. And a lot of the discussion that we were having on funding of future capital projects, specifically the courthouse, was associated with the balances that we would have in the sales tax, the capital projects account. We ended the year for fifteen in the account, in the capital projects account, with about seventeen point seven million dollars. Going through the analysis for the current year, we should receive about six point three million in revenue, and we have about five point six, five point seven million dollars in expenses for the next several years. The earliest date that we may pay off the jail without any legal consequence is April first of twenty eighteen. So in recalculating that, factoring those changes in, by the end of that year, once we pay off the jail, we should have an ending balance of about ten point nine million, and also have a depreciation reserve of about one point six million. When you carry that forward through the termination date of that sales tax that's funding these projects, the county should carry about twenty-one million in a balance, and about one point six million, give or take, depending on what types of major maintenance items occur, and about twenty-one million dollars to consider funding of any of the projects. The, in relation to the original movement to use general fund tax, if you will, to pay for the architectural services, staff position would be that we ended the year about where we thought we would. We were down about five hundred thousand from the prior year, so that was a deficit in the general fund. The, the fund balance will drop to about twelve point two million to begin this fiscal year. And because we moved back three million in vehicle replacement funds, we estimate by the end of this year, after spending some known contingencies, that we should end up with a general fund of about fourteen point five million. So again, from a staff's perspective, I wouldn't recommend that you utilize general fund dollars, that we preserve those dollars so that we have enough cash flow, if you will, to get through the next, certainly the next year. As well as, I would always recommend that before you expend anything on a capital project, that you actually have the money in the bank prior to using that for another purpose. So I hope that that summarizes sufficiently, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I, I need to back up a little bit and request a motion on forty-seven B, discussion on possible action reference, address item forty from the Board of Supervisors, September twenty-first, twenty fifteen meeting today, rather than wait until the April twenty-sixth. It's just a house cleaning issue, but I do need a motion on that.
Is there a move?
Second. Okay, motion second, all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we can go on to item forty-eight, which is what we were doing, so this is-
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
May I make a, just a slight clarification on Coral's presentation? On the capital projects, I believe she would agree, and this is a question that we wouldn't recommend approving any capital projects unless we have the money in the bank, or unless we have a, a funding source, a guaranteed funding source. And that was a part that wasn't stated. So a guaranteed funding source, the only guaranteed funding source we would have available is possibly a public-private partnership, possibly an extension of the sales tax. You know, there's, there's several options there, but I just didn't want it to appear that we said we wouldn't move forward, recommend moving forward with any capital projects with just solely the money in the bank. There's other options.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's been a lot made of the fact that we can't pay off the jail until twenty eighteen, which is true, but we have, I think we've always planned for was the ability to have the money today, or this year, when this budget comes up, to pay off the jail in twenty eighteen. That being the case, and a lot of people do it, and I think it's a good move, is to put that money into the account and give it to the bonds people, and they draw down on that, and in twenty eighteen, they cut us a check saying, hey, this is the interest that accrued or didn't. I don't see the benefit of keeping the money here where it obviously is subject to being raided at any time. I mean, we could pay off the debt this year, it's basically be paid off, but it wouldn't be paid off officially until eighteen, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to clarify that for people, because some people don't understand.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, item forty-eight, let me just go ahead and read that so we're clear where we are. Discussion on possible action reference, identify and approve funding for architectural service for the Mojave County Superior Court Building and construction and historical courthouse remodel project for the Justice Court. Take any further action as appropriate for the design and construction of a new courthouse.
Madam Chair, based upon the statements of County Administrator Hendricks and Finance Director Coral Lloyd, I move that we approve item forty-eight.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Moss to approve item number forty-eight. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of questions. As the way forty-eight is, is identified, I'm a little bit leery of not investigating all the revenue sources possible and all the funding possible, along with the ability to work with public-private partnerships. If I could ask Administrator Hendricks, what are all the possible avenues in which we could build that courthouse?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Watson, I, I don't have the answer to all the, all the funding options. I'm shoulder to shoulder with Coral Lloyd on if there isn't another revenue source. You know, we, we certainly don't want to borrow money, any monies to, or I wouldn't recommend to the Board to borrow any monies to move forward with the construction of a courthouse unless we had a guaranteed revenue source to pay off that borrow. Right now, we don't have a current alternate revenue source. The Board would have to approve one in the future, and the most likely one would be to enact a quarter cent sales tax, or to extend the existing quarter cent sales tax. Without that occurring, I would have to say that staff recommendation would be exactly what Coral said originally, that we would need money in the bank before we would, or the guarantee of money in the bank to pay for the entire project before we would begin construction of the project. In reading this motion, it does include a construction component. You know, I think what Coral said is currently in the sales tax fund, in the building fund, you know, she, she has seventeen point something million dollars, which would be sufficient to, to pay for the payoff of the jail. And since we're not going to be paying the jail off until twenty sixteen, there would be sufficient monies in that fund to go ahead and procure the services of an architect, but to contemplate construction at this time would be premature.
Madam Chair, also on that, with the motion, if I'm correct reading it, identify and approve funding for architectural services for Mojave County Superior Court Building, construction and historical courthouse remodel project for the Justice Court. Take any further action as appropriate for the design and construction of a new courthouse. I think we need a funding source. We also need some kind of a cap on this. We, if I'm correct, the last time the Superior Court came in front of us, the Justice Court was cut out of the new building, which that's what lowered the price. There's nothing here about price, or I, I think if a motion is going to move forward, it has to say we're going to fund architectural services to the tune of not to exceed two and a half million dollars to be paid for out of X account or whatever, and then, I mean, that's, that's what I would think, I could be wrong, but-
Maybe Judge Gerler can shed some light on that?
That's who I always wanted to get my financial advice from.
May please the Chairman, Supervisors, Administration, and Counsel. Supervisor Johnson is correct. It would be wise to identify the source. It would also be wise to identify a cap. However, he is incorrect in that, that the prior request did not exclude the Justice Court. County Administrator Hendricks specifically wanted the architectural services to cover not only the new courthouse, but also the renovation of the existing courthouse, so that we would be able to move the Justice Court, the Kingman Circuit Justice Court, into the old courthouse. In going through that process, we discerned that the going rate is approximately two million rather than three million. And if the Board approves utilizing the monies from the quarter cent sales tax with a cap of two million, then in that event, this does not affect, given the financial information that Coral has been able to provide the Board, it does not affect the Board's ability to make the twenty sixteen payment on the jail, the twenty seventeen payment on the jail, nor to pay it off in twenty eighteen. In fact, there's approximately nine million dollars that will be left over, and that does not include the one point six million that is in the depreciation maintenance account. The information that she provided indicates that if we utilize the two million dollars for the architect, by the time that this tax sunsets, if you include back in the one point six million dollars from the depreciation and maintenance account, because that can't follow the jail once it's paid off, we're at approximate, just slightly under twenty-one million. And I want you to consider this. When the National Center for State Courts completed its analysis, the high estimate for the total project was twenty-one million. That was the high estimate. You know, it's, the potential is there that, you know, we may be at the low estimate at eighteen million. We could be somewhere in between, but making up the difference of five hundred thousand, if we have, you know, twenty million, five hundred in the account, and it's at the high amount of twenty-one million, five hundred thousand is not, is much easier to make up than, you know, eighteen million, or seven million, or, you know, given the amount that was previously requested back in the early two thousands when they wanted forty-five million for this project. We have scaled this back tremendously, and yet it's scaled back to allow for future growth and to meet our needs. And when the National Center for State, we were able to, this Board approved State Justice Institute grant a couple of years ago, that allowed the National Center for State Courts to come in and help us with our five-year plan for the courts. And as a part of that process, I was hoping that the National Center for State Courts would help us have the Mojave Courts identified as a high-performing court. The National Center's comment was, you already in Mojave County are a high-performing court. Sometimes it's more difficult to maintain that designation. The impediments, the potential impediments to us maintaining our designation as a high-performing court are really technological advances and physical plant. That's where we're at. We want to maintain our status as a high-performing court. The funding is available for the architect. You know, the Board previously approved, looking at selling county land, you've got two pieces on Beale Street, they're- two pieces on Beale Street, they're approximately $1 million each. Why do we not have a $1 million piece of property on the tax rolls? You know, if that generates a million, $2 million, then you have more than enough to not only finish the court project, you've got money left over to help animal shelter or other capital projects that the county has identified. So I would request that Supervisor Moss, that you modify your motion to include that the funding be out of the quarter cent sales tax. And if you're not comfortable with capping it at $2 million, cap it at 2.2 so that we have more than enough, you know, to turn around and ensure that this go-round, when we come back to the board with the contract with an identified architect, that it will be funded and that we can finally continue to move this process forward. And we'd certainly entertain any questions.
Do any of the board members have any questions? Supervisor Watson?
I could certainly support that with the modifications.
Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson?
I have a question, Ms. Lloyd. What are that money everybody's talking about as restricted funds to pay off the jail, correct? The $6 million for, that we transferred over cannot be used for anything else?
That's correct, from the TB District.
Right, and we also have money that, I'm not sure if the judge was referencing it or not, but money we collect from the cities, which they got a little bit out of shape and made us put into an account to make sure we put on the depreciation, that has to go stay where it's at to go on to redoing the jail?
That we haven't, that was about, you're talking about the depreciation with the cities itself?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Judy was able to go back and calculate that. That's about $500, $600,000. So we have to have a discussion with how we're going to designate that, whether that's general fund, coming from the jail fees, or whether we allocate a portion of this. What the county has been doing for this depreciation major maintenance has not necessarily been tying it to those calculations. You've been putting aside $200,000 a year.
I guess that's it, and obviously the board knows my feelings on this. I don't see why we'd be rushing into this. I don't think we're going to have the money to build this court with the quarter cent sales tax. When I look back at the money we spent on the jail loan, I mean, when that was, you know, how much that has cost us, because when it first came out, I said, you know, why don't we, I brought to the board and had somebody give a presentation on privatizing our jail. And I said, at the end of the time, we'll have $200 million in our hand where we have nothing now, and that's turned out to be true. We've spent 63, almost $64 million in payments. We spent $80 million in just running the jail. That's $144 million, around there. When you add in the money that'll continue to be paid off, it'll bring it up to the $200 million mark. At the same time, if we would have just taken a private prison, and even though it was like $50 some dollars at that time to house a prisoner, we're charging $61 now, and we only have about $8,000 bed nights a year, and even, and some of those are cities, but even if we were generous and paid for the cities and the counties and everybody, at the $60 fee is less than half a million dollars. So in that amount of time, till the end of the jail thing, we'd only spent like $5.3 million as compared to the $200 million plus we'd have a free jail. So, you know, the majority board is, you know, that's how everything works. I would just, you know, take a step back and look at it, and I don't know why you would need to approve it this time, but I think we're rushing to something we don't have the full amount of money to pay for. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Moss?
I have just a question for Ms. Lloyd. Just to get down to the brass tacks of it, just to make sure my understanding is complete, after the jail is paid off, we are ultimately, before the expiration of the quarter cent sales tax, going to have roughly $20 million available, give or take a little bit, for the jail project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Supervisor Angus?
Did we always have money in the bank when we did all the other buildings? Did we have the amount when we started those projects, all the different buildings that have been built over the years?
No, ma'am. We did, I don't want to, creative financing where we had somebody build it for us to leak, you know, the leaseback, where they built it and we paid it, and we used the revenues generated by the quarter cent to guarantee that. We'd originally thought we'd probably do that same thing, where we're going to build all of the facilities together. We wanted every building to be on one campus, and then obviously the board changed. I think right now, we have, just in the Kingman alone, we have 34 buildings scattered throughout the area, you know? So we had to finance it. That's how they did the jail. They did it with the bond.
You know, again, this is, was a list of priorities from 1999, when the quarter cent sales tax, that was began January 1st, 2000. And again, the Law and Justice Center was number one with an estimated cost in 2000 of $34,000, $250,000, and it was approved unanimously by that board back then, right?
It was, but it wasn't number one. It was just one of five. We didn't rate them by what we thought would be the best one.
Well, I was always on the impression that it was, this was the, because the sheriff's substations is less, but all these buildings and more, except for that, have been built, except the sheriff's substations and other buildings too. And I don't really think that we had the money in the bank when we did all those buildings. And, you know, we can debate whether or not some of those buildings were necessary. The Law and Justice Center was unanimously. So to say, you know, I don't know what the rush is, is a little, I know you hate this word, but disingenuous, you know? So I do think it's time, we've talked about this, and if we don't do it now, it's a big problem, and it's only going to get worse. If in 2000 it was a problem, 16 years later, it's a bigger problem. Am I correct? And it's soon going to be a problem that we're going to have no choice in, and we might have to spend more to take care of things that if we took care of it then, am I wrong?
Supervisor Angus, you're very correct. I mean, we take a look at the, you know, insurance that came through and took a look at all of the buildings and things of this nature, and, I mean, which one turned around and had the most issues to be addressed?
And our ASAP, our insurance comes down and they, and they look over those buildings. And, you know, we could be surprised at any time that things that we have to do, and you never really want to start doing that when you're, when you're forced to and your back's up against the wall. So, you know, we've been talking about this, and I think it's time to act.
I think that probably the best comment was from Supervisor Moss last year, that he has, you know, being involved as an attorney and having been at the courthouse, his comment was something to the extent that, you know, there's a disaster just waiting to happen. You know, Supervisor Johnson pointed out, it's amazing that we have security at the court, and yet we've got our World War II plaque that's being vandalized. You know, folks, there are issues with security, and I'm sure the Sheriff's Department certainly cannot wait to have a secure Sally Port, to have separate entrance for the transport of prisoners, separate hallways so that the prisoners are not intermingling with the public, with victims, with court staff. You know, these are all issues, as I say, that, you know, Supervisor Moss commented, it's a disaster waiting to happen? Well, fortunately, knock on wood, we haven't had that disaster happen. But as you say, you know, when your back is up against the wall, typically speaking, you know, all of a sudden, the cost becomes more and time becomes of the essence. We have the opportunity now.
Madam Chairman?
I could amend my motion to go up to, limit the architectural fees to 2.2 million of the funding source to be designated from the quarter cent sales tax fund.
Okay, thank you. I think we are still under discussion, and Supervisor Watson wanted to make a comment. And then County Administrator Hendricks?
No, I don't have any further, that clarified my question.
Okay.
I believe it would take a corrected second.
amended second. Oh, do we need a second on it? Okay, so I second the amended motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so you did second it. Okay, Mr. Hendricks?
On, you know, we're talking about delivery methods, and I think that was a very good question, Madam Chairman, that Supervisor Watson had. One of the delivery methods would be a design, build, leaseback, to own. That's something similar to what, basically, that's what happened with this building and what happened with the jail, and we ended up paying this building off early. And unfortunately, we can't pay the jail off early, but we have the funds available. If you go, and I'm not saying not to do this, I'm not recommending not to do this. What we're choosing right now is to do a conventional delivery method, which is a design bid build on the courthouse if we choose to go with an architect. Sometimes that's the most cost-effective method. However, if we do a design bid build, we wouldn't be able to start the project construction immediately after the design is complete. We would only, staff would only recommend starting the project or the construction after we have an indication of a guarantee of sufficient funds in hand. Now, if we did a design bill, build, leaseback to own, you know, we could, and I'm not recommending doing that, but if we did a design build, leaseback to own, then you could leverage, conceivably leverage the quarter cent sales tax and start the project early, and that would be an option. By choosing the architectural option right now, you would be limiting the delivery methods. And that, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm just wanting to make the board aware of that.
I do have one question. If we approve the architectural plans, how, and I'll ask this of you, Judge, once the architectural plans are approved, how long a time period before you actually hire, make the decision of who the architect will be, and then how long does it take an architect to draw up complicated plans like these?
Coming from the private sector, I'm always amazed at how slowly government can move. As an example, you know, you approved the last year at about this time, the, you know, solar project at the Bullhead City Courthouse, and we haven't even had that gone out to bid yet. It's been over a year. You know, I anticipate that this go-round with the architect will go much quicker because we've already, you know, procurement and public works have already worked through all the documentation. So it shouldn't be a multi-month delay like it was last go-round with this project. I still anticipate that by the time that you, you know, notice it out to, you know, architects, you give them time for their submittals, you have the committee meet to go over who they would, you know, choose to interview, you know, then you choose, you know, your top choice, then there's time that public works takes and actually, you know, negotiating a contract to present to the board. You know, you're looking at an absolute minimum of six months, if probably not closer to nine months. You know, it's going to take an architect a year to prepare the plans. This is what, you know, the National Center is telling me, this is what the AOC is telling me with other court projects, you know, it's going to take the county at least, you know, four to six months to review, make sure that it's, you know, workable. You know, by the time you're actually looking at going out to put this to bid to a contractor, you're looking at 2019 with the year to build, when the, you know, it sunsets. That's at a best-case scenario timeframe.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought was the case. So it's really timely, if we're going to do it, that now, this year, would be, would be the time. And then I was a little uncomfortable about the quarter cent sales tax, having enough money. And then when we passed putting private property that we own as a county on the market, that's going to give us a little bit of a cushion, so I feel better about that now, so. And I got to tell you, I've been over at the Superior Court when people are sitting on the floor, when their benches are full, and people are sitting on the floor, and inmates are being brought in by deputies through this meander of folks that are waiting for their family or their cases to be heard. It is a security problem. It's, and I've also been down in the basement to see the conditions of, that the public doesn't see, you know, the leaking and the, I think there's mold, and it's just, conditions are implorable. So if we don't build soon, I think, I think we're going to be forced to build legally. So that's all I have to say about that. And Coral, I assume that you're comfortable if we go forward today with the financial end of it?
She's shaking her head yes.
Yes, yes.
Is there anything that we haven't asked you that needs to be clarified?
I don't think so. I think you've had a good discussion.
We've been discussing this for a long time, a long time. Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, an amended motion. We have a second to that amended motion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it passes 4 to 1. Okay, going on to item number 49, discussion of possible action reference, Mojave County Board of Supervisors supporting and signing on to the Free the Lands Coalition letter, calling on Congress to initiate and pass legislation, and together with the administration and agencies, coordinate in good faith the transition of ownership to willing states of all federally controlled multiple use lands for more effective local care and management. We do have two people that have signed up to speak, but I'll turn this over to Supervisor Angus to start out.
Oh, okay. Well, I put this on, I had received a letter, we are members of the American Lands Council, and they've been distributing this letter that they were, are hoping, you know, it's yet another resolution, another letter. We've done several of them over the years. Things are happening. I do keep in touch, and I saw Ken Ivory over the weekend. I was actually in Salt Lake City. The American Lands Council was speaking actually to Donald Trump Jr., as they do all the candidates, as their job is to educate elected officials and candidates for the highest office, hoping that they understand this very sensitive issue. You know, people from the East especially don't really seem to understand what we're going through out here in the West, and I think it was successful in that, that he understood the issue better than when he walked in the room. So they sent a letter, I don't, I didn't see it in our backup, I'm sorry, I just noticed it. Am I missing something? Didn't I forward that letter? Didn't I forward the letter when I asked for this to be put on the agenda?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus, I believe we modified the signature page for the letter, and I thought it was in the backup.
It's not. So I don't know how to proceed because we don't have the actual letter, but it says the same things, just what it said here, calling on the government to pass legislation. And then what the American Lands Council is going to do is take all these letters again when they go to Washington Lobby, and I will tell you that more and more action, it's now an issue that is talked about at the highest levels, and we are hoping with a change of administration that something will happen. Of course, a lot of the goals, I think, that originally the American Lands Council was talking about are now sort of, there's been a little bit of a negotiation, things that I think are unacceptable to people, such as, you know, selling and things like that. Again, I would like to see everything, decisions made locally, but we have to start somewhere. And I guess each state will decide on its own how they want to go forward. We are a little behind the curve, actually, in Arizona, Nevada, and Utah. Utah's really on the forefront, and we're watching everything that they do. They're the ones taking the leaps, and they've hired a constitutional attorney, one of the best, actually not one, the best constitutional attorneys in the country. They believe that if it went up in the Supreme Court, they would win. However, with some of the recent events that just happened in the last few days in the Supreme Court, and some of the opinions that they have let out, we don't know what they're going to do. That's just the truth. So there's all these different avenues. There's litigation and education and legislation, and they're trying to cover all those bases. And I think that's what this letter will say, that we as the Mojave County Supervisors are signing on to this whole program to educate, litigate, and legislate for the litigate, and legislate for the transfer of public lands.
It is in backup.
Okay, well, it's not.
But it is in backup.
Okay, it wasn't in my packet, so that's okay, that's probably from me. Okay, maybe I just don't have it. Does everybody have it? Oh, then it was just me, so then we can just go forward on it.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I guess the question I have is, similar to Supervisor Angus brought it up, is I don't trust the state anymore, and I trust the feds to give them the land. And, I mean, we sent the letter to the state saying, hey, you got all the state land, you don't pay us any money, you know, now we're going to give them more land, and they take pretty poor, poor ownership of the land they do have. So I guess that's it, if we keep, if we can put it in to say, hey, we want it in local control, because I don't believe our state can do it.
Yeah, I would, I agree with that. And I don't think there's any proposal that says it's going to go in that state lands trust, but I agree with you. I don't know how it is with other states, but the consensus in Arizona is that the state doesn't do such a great job either, and I am for the people who are closest to that land deciding, and it'll be up to the state, it'll be up to us to decide how that would happen, what the transfer would actually look like, which is the problem, you know, that you can say, yeah, you're for it, you're going to say, but, okay, how's it going to go forward, and you're going to need tax reform to go, to go along with the transfer. You just can't say, I'm going to give you this bunch of land, and, but we're going to keep all the money that we've put aside for the management. There was just an article in the paper that, what is it, like eleven, the federal parks department is in the hole, for eleven point five billion dollars in managing its part of the public lands, and it's only going to get worse, as we know with all the things we've been through. And that's why I went there to, to tell potential elected people what we're going through in Mojave County, and we're just such a small part of this whole problem, and that's why everybody else was there. And the more people we get to listen, and that's what the American Lands Council does, so when they ask for us to support them with a letter, I think it's something that we should do since we are a member.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Elsie Heron. I have a request to speak on this item, if you'd like to come forward and give us your name and address. My apologies.
Twenty-one twenty-eight, Whitetail Lane, Kingman, Arizona. God bless you, Hildy, thank you very much for putting this on the agenda. Something similar to this has been put on the agenda, going all the way back to the late nineties, by our commissioners. And every single time, it's voted in, in a positive manner. It's really important that we not only make this statement here locally, but I know you guys are really well-connected, you will also need to reach out outside of Mojave County and do a little bit of education on a higher level. You're going to have to talk to Maricopa County, they're clueless, they don't know what this is all about. You're going to have to reach out to other counties and make them understand why this is important to them, and they're not going to care about the constitutional issues, unfortunately, but when you get down to the money, and you're talking about the difference between, I think Mojave County, if you just do our money, it's, when the State Trust Land Department manages our stuff, they're making us thirty-six cents an acre. When the BLM mismanages our land, they're making us three cents an acre. That's on our land, that's on our acreage in Mojave County. Now, the only other statistics I know are from Clark County, Nevada, which is what got me a little bit impassioned on this. Clark County, Nevada, lands managed by the state are two dollars and twenty-three cents an acre profit, money, cash, to your state. Lands mismanaged by the BLM cost Clark County, Nevada, ninety-one cents an acre. That's a big deal. So when you're talking to people that don't really care about whether it's constitutional for the federal government to control our state lands or not, you can fall back on the money, and it shouldn't take much to do a little quick front research on their particular county to talk to them, to get this on board with us. Arizona, right now, is supposed to be the second freest state in the nation, and I can tell you from the escapees coming out of California, I believe that number. My phone rings off the bloody hook for vacant rural properties in Arizona, and four years ago, they told me a realtor can't make a living selling rural lands. Guys, I'm making a living. So we have something here in Mojave County, we need to hang on to it, we need to preserve it, and we need to stop anybody that's trying to turn us into California, or any of those other places. Thank you very much, Hildy, for putting this on the calendar. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeffrey Jolly.
I'll give my name and address.
Thank you.
My name's Jeffrey Jolly, and I live at Schott's Ranch, Kingman, Arizona. I'd like to thank you, Supervisor Angus, for bringing this to our attention and letting everybody know just what's going on out here in the country. And we have one country boy sitting up there, and I thank you for that, sir. You might not know the amount of money that we've been giving away, allowing the BLM to break the Constitution. And Supervisor Johnson, I don't know if you've heard several of the numbers here, and I don't like the state any more than I like the feds either, but when you dangle a bunch of money in front of them, and we get our pittance, maybe we'll get a lot bigger pittance. Right now, we give away to the feds, they dictate not only how much we pay to them, they dictate how much our cattle ranchers go for, they tell us where we can and not go, can and cannot go on the roads, they close roads all over Arizona for hunting. It is a major catastrophe, they just close them down, close them down, and continue to close them down. On with that, they take our assets. I mean, come on, you guys were just talking about an asset here called boroughs. Now, they can't even control the borough population in our county, and we give them tons and tons and tons of money. There's a problem here. This is constitutionally said, whether we like it or not, Supervisor Johnson, the money goes to the state, not the feds, for the BLM. It's constitutional. We have been taken over by the federal government, stealing our tax dollars. And I sit here, week after week after week, and see you try to come up with more money to get things done. We don't have enough money to pay our police officers to keep them, we do not keep our people here in the county to work, they've not had raises for, I don't, they got the numbers. But when we can get two and three dollars instead of pennies back from fees and assets and everything, by golly, you ought to do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. In looking at this, this item that you put on here, that everybody is pretty happy about, Supervisor Angus, I can't help but wonder if Mojave County was to take back our federal lands, and the state parks are behind in their financial responsibilities, and all the abandoned mines that are out there in Mojave County, I would hope that financially we'd be able to gain enough money from, from the management of our own lands to take care of those problems. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know there's, there's a lot of expense, and I personally would like to know where the money's coming from and what the plan is, but as far as signing on to a support letter, I'm good with that, for now.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes, Supervisor Moss.
And like others, I want to thank Supervisor Angus for putting this on the agenda, and I support her in that. I'll just give you the example of the Moss Mine, no relation to me, unfortunately, but the Moss Mine is currently mining, or was mining, gold in the Bullhead City vicinity, and the mining claims were exclusively state claimed. They know for a fact that on the federal lands that immediately surround Moss Mine, which is state claimed, there is a multiple of ten, twenty, some other outrageously high multiple of additional gold deposits out there. That is just one example, and it's scrubbed, scrubbed desert land, it's not ecologically or architecturally sensitive in a slightest, it's just scrubbed desert, and we're literally sitting on gold mine. In northern Mojave County, we're sitting on uranium mine. I believe our state mining inspector was talking about the potash deposits that go up and down the I-40 corridor, which would include the Kingman area. We are, we are extraordinarily wealthy in mineral resources that we cannot touch. And that's just one example amongst many, is to the revenue and the high-paying jobs and the prosperity that could come to Mojave County and all of Arizona. Supervisor Angus is ultimately successful in this organization she wants to partner with, is very ultimately successful, in getting these lands out of federal ownership, out of government ownership, and into private ownership.
There being no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, or I'll ask for a motion.
Most approve the revised letter.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, item number fifty, discussion of possible action, keeping with statutory duties to fill the vacancy created by the death of the Mojave County Recorder, appoint a qualified Republican resident to fill the Mojave County Recorder position until a person is elected at the next regular general election to fill the remainder of the unexpired term. So...
Madam Chair, are we looking to replace him today? Would that be the idea?
The idea is we could make a replacement today, or we could make a motion to do something else, if we want to entertain letters of interest, I know we've done that in the past, or we could just appoint someone today.
What's the...
Madam Chair, who right now is filling in temporarily? Right now, the chief, chief deputy is filling in temporarily, and then... But the decision is ours, whether or not we want to leave that person in that position, or appoint someone that is more neutral.
Unfortunately, this is, I think, the fourth appointment this board has had to do, and it's not something we enjoy, believe me, and the situation is tragic, how we usually get here, but this particular position, because it's an election year, is very important, and I think continuity is important, and I would have no problem in appointing for the rest of the term, because it's being, it's an elected position, and it will be up for reelection this year. I would have no problem in appointing the person who's sitting there now, who would be, to me, the natural person to fill this temporarily.
Okay, does anybody else have any items to discuss?
Madam Chair, obviously, I never go for somebody who's running for the office, I believe that person is put in for the office, I wouldn't support that. But I haven't supported the other ones in law either, so. I think I'd be in support of finding out who all would be interested in, in the office.
Okay, I can tell you that I have spoke to an employee that works in that office that is not running for election. Robert Ballard has, has told me that if he was, if his name was brought up, he would accept the temporary position and would not run for reelection, or would not run for election. And then we have two, two others that work there that are running for election, that I'm sure would be interested in that appointment as well. So, so we can either make a motion to appoint Mr. Ballard until the election, or we can, whatever the board wants, we can send out letters of interest and interview them like we've done in the past.
I think, Madam Chair, if we can, come to an agreement today, you know, whichever way it goes, just because of the fact that we can't keep stamping the, you know, the recorder's name on important documents, you know, because of the legalities of it. And I have no problem, I think Mr. Ballard's done a wonderful job, and he certainly keeps us up to date on information that he, for our records-keeping, I think he's been a longtime employee and understands the job, and I think he'd be a perfect fit to, if he would do it, to fill out the term.
Is that a motion?
I could make, I could have gotten a motion to appoint Robert Ballard to temporarily, or to be the recorder. I guess the question out halfway...
Madam Chair, if I could?
Before I finish my motion, would be to, Mr. Exstrom, would it, as we do have an election coming up, let's say we don't have a general, can we make a motion to go through until somebody's elected at the primary, or the general, either one? Or do we need to do it through the end of the year?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, you need to do it through the whole term, and you really can't place a condition on it that they don't seek the office.
Oh, right, yeah, I understand that. So I guess my motion would be through the end of the term.
Can I say something?
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion to discuss, please. Yeah, we have a motion and second, and under discussion, Supervisor Angus.
I think if you're going to pull a name out of the, you know, hat, that, this is the first I've heard of this, and it's not the person who was temporarily appointed, then we have to put out to everybody, anybody who wants to do this, not just, you know, right here, right now, this name comes up that I've never heard mentioned before. So I would have a problem with that, I think, if you're going to do that, put it up for anybody who, who wants to do it, like we have in the past.
Okay, thank you. As Chair, I'd like to hear from Mr. Ballard, and ask you if you would be willing to accept this appointment before we take the vote. I think it's important how you feel about this.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Supervisor Moss, go ahead.
Yes, I really think, there's something, there's something I think is very important, it's called notice, due process, it's simply notice and opportunity to be heard, and I really think that before we appoint anyone, we have to give everybody who's interested an opportunity to express an interest in the position, even if it's just via letter before we actually go out and appoint for someone. It can be a week, it can be two weeks, it doesn't need to be a lot of time, but we need, including Mr. Ballard, but we need to have everyone who has an interest, we need to give them time to comment on this, and to throw their name into the ring and tell us why they should be the interim recorder or not. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Exstrom, do you have an opinion on that? Do we need to have notice?
Madam Chairman, the board has it within their prerogative to handle this however they want to.
Okay.
So notice...
Move to the front.
Mr. Ballard, would you like to make a comment before we take this to the vote?
Sure. Madam Chair, board member, staff, I was surprised and honored that my name was brought up, I did not ask for this. After consideration on my part, I would like to be considered, my name thrown in the hat. I do have some provisions that, for me, need to be met, and it really deals with after the public has decided who the next recorder will be, my continued employment, so.
That's a legitimate concern.
It's pretty important.
I'm willing to do anything the board decides.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Madam Chair?
Attorney Exstrom, I don't believe there would be a problem with that continued employment. Do you concur?
Madam Chairman, the only protection it has is to the merit rules, so whatever rights he has from the merit rules could be perhaps continued pending he's filling this position. There's got to be a way to do it.
Okay. Supervisor Angus?
Yeah, I have a problem, that this seems to have been decided up here in Kingman, and this is absolutely the first, I've heard this name, and this is nothing against Mr. Ballard. I know him, I don't know him very well, but it seems like it was decided already, and I, I've not, I've not been notified, and I have a big issue with that, for something this important.
Okay, well, I believe it had to do with the open meeting laws, as far as I'm concerned. I had discussed this with Supervisor Watson, so...
No, I'll tell you what, I will throw my second, we can hear from our three people that are interested, and go from there.
I guess the only problem I have is I think it needs to be, be the person who needs to be replaced, I think Mr. Ballard is a good, it's a good choice, because, let's say he's apolitical, but he's never been political as long as I've known him. He does a great job of giving us all the information. I think this job is more of a job that we, unlike ours, where we use more of our own initiative, or... initiative, or to get answers, I think the recorder has pretty much set in statute exactly what they do, I think it's more of a technical job than it is opinion job, but whatever the opinion of the board is fine with me, but I think at some point, we're going to have a problem with the recorder job of signing off on, on items that need to be recorded, you know, especially when it involves a lot of money.
That's true, and if we call the other two candidates up and let them speak, well, then we've slighted Mr. Zaborsky, who is also wanting the same position, so I don't think that would be a wise thing to do, or fair. So we have a motion on the floor?
I withdrew my second.
And you withdrew your second, so, so we still have the motion, and we're looking for a second. I will second the motion if no one else will. We have a motion and a second, we'll call for the vote, and we'll do a roll call. Jenny?
Supervisor Watson?
I'll vote yes.
Supervisor Angus?
I'm going to vote no, and it's not a no to the person, it's a no to the process.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Moss?
Voting no, also because of the process.
And Chairman Bishop?
Yes. Okay, motion passes three to two, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Very good.
Motion adjourned.